Welcome to the December 16th, 2021 meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. The commission members have a chance to ask questions, if any, and the members of the public can make their comments. A reminder that only four people may speak for an agenda item and for against an agenda item, and each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commissioners. After four minutes in speaking, a loud beep will indicate that you have one minute left to speak, and at that point, we'd like for you to summarize your comments. After all opposition, if any, has finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium down at the front, speak into the microphone, and provide your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all the comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand from the seats if there are no objections to any staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will then go into the deliberation sessions. In deliberation, the commissioners discuss each application with input from staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and our results of the voting would be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, I'll have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those in order to resolve them or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there's only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. Planning Commission does make final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and PUDs, planned unit developments. The Planning Commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. A reminder to silence your phones at this time, and commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll. Myself, Jay Stubbs, present. Mr. Allen Cameron. Ms. Jennifer Denson. Mr. Carlos Gant. Ms. Surly Sessions. Mr. Taylor Atchison. Mr. Matt Anderson. Mr. Nick Amberger. Mr. Scott Jones. Ms. Susan Carley. Mr. Kirk Matei. We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for December 16th. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor? We'll move on to the first item on the agenda under the holdovers section. 2662 Philin Gym Street. Staff recommends the Planning Commission. We are for approval with three findings of fact and five conditions. Is the applicant present?
Note, I'm recused on this one.
Thank you, Carlos. Mr. Carlos Gant is recused on item number one. Yes, sir?
My name is Richard Bettis. Address 1907 Bulkin Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama. 2C605.
And there are findings of fact. This is recommended for approval, and then we have five conditions. Are you in agreement with those conditions from the staff? Is there anyone else here to speak for the holdover item number one? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to item number one? Any questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to the extensions. Number two, 1901 Hurtel Street. It is a subdivision of Maryvale Place subdivision and a PUD. Again, Mr. Carlos Gant is recused for item number two. It's been recommended for a one-year extension for approval on both the subdivision and the PUD. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? And you're understanding that any future extensions would likely be, or not will be unlikely? Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the extension of number two, 1901 Hurtel Moving on. New subdivision applications. Item number three, 153 and 155 North Florida Street. Ashland Main Street subdivision. It's been recommended for tentative approval, subject to eight conditions. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd?
In agreement.
In agreement with all eight?
Yes.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this agenda item? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to 153 and 155 North Florida Street? Moving on to new planned unit development applications. Item number four, 2485 West I-65 Service Road North. A PUD for Empire Truck Sales. It's recommended for approval with findings of fact in addition to 10 conditions for the PUD. Mr. Byrd, applicant?
Yes, Jerry Byrd, Byrd serving 2609 Halls Mill Road, Mobile. Here for the applicant. We had no objection to any of the conditions, but there was a letter came in, or a comment came in from Maus concerning the width of an easement in the front, asking for an easement in the front. They were asking for 30 feet. Mr. Lomax with Maus is here, and he may want to speak on it too, but we have agreed that 20 feet across the front of that piece of property would be sufficient. Other than that, I don't have any. Oh, excuse me. And Mr. Hinson is a neighbor across Antone Street. Front's on the service road. He was here. He didn't know what was going on. I have given him a plat showing the proposed construction, but he may have a question. I'm not sure.
Jerry, are you saying that you are, your client is willing to give Maus a 20-foot easement where that pipe already exists?
Yes.
We don't have legal authority to dictate that, and that's between them, and so we don't need to make it a condition of approval or anything.
Okay.
It's not listed in any of the 10 conditions here?
Right.
So other words, Mr. Byrd, we're all good with? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item?
Jim, I don't know what's going on, but I can tell you Empire Truck Sales has been very well respected in Pensacola. I own a business in Pensacola. I've been there 35 years.
Your name, sir, Mr. Hinson?
It's Charles Ralph Hinson.
Yes, sir.
I own Hinson Truck Sales, and I own the property, joined them on that service road there. Me and my buddy together's got about 18 acres there, I think it is. The first five acres is mine, in terms. And we bought it 24 years ago, and the other thing involved is Lamar Outdoors got some signs on my property. I just like not do anything to disturb them, you know. They've been paying me rent for 24 years now.
So are you, are you speaking, you just want to make sure that your concerns are addressed?
Sure.
You just want to make sure that your concerns are addressed with the applicant, with Empire?
Yep. Empire's fine. They're nice people. They've got probably one of the nicest-run facilities in Pensacola. I cannot speak nothing but good about them. Yes, sir.
So just to be clear, you're not in opposition of the agenda item?
No, and what they've done in the past, and what I've saw, I'm not in opposition against anything they want to do because they know how to do it first class.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinson. Is there anyone else here to speak against agenda item four? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to new zoning applicant, rezoning applications. Number five, 118 Kilmerock Street. It's been recommended for approval with five conditions listed. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd, all good? Is anyone else here to speak in favor of 118 Kilmerock Street? Is anyone here to speak against? Moving on to new rezoning application, item number six, 117 North Catherine Street. It's been recommended for approval with eight conditions listed. Is the applicant present? All good? Mr. Byrd?
In agreement.
Is there anyone else here to speak for 117 North Catherine? Is there anyone else here to speak against 117 North Catherine? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number seven falls under new sidewalk waiver applications. This is 1812 Old Shell Road, the RGH Development. Staff has recommended the waiver of the sidewalk along the portion of Old Shell, and it's my understanding that staff has confirmed the traffic engineering comment with the applicant. Is the applicant present? You're in agreement? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the 1812 Old Shell Road sidewalk waiver? Is there anyone here to speak against the waiver? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under group applications, agenda item eight, southwest corner of Ziegler Boulevard and North University Boulevard. There are two here. This is a subdivision as well as a rezone. It's been recommended for approval, tentative approval on the subdivision with seven conditions, and then a rezone has been recommended for approval with conditions. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd?
Jerry Byrd, Byrd serving 2609 Halls Mill Road. We had one request on number five, traffic engineering comments, and that's limiting the site to one curb cut per street frontage. Site plan we had, which was from the proposed purchaser, shows two out onto University Boulevard, and really felt like that the westernmost or southernmost entrance would, would line up with the entrance coming in off of Ziegler Boulevard and across the back of the building acting more as a service drive. And the other one, the other entrance on University would go directly into the Pump Island area. That makes it easier to access those as opposed to circling the building to get there. That would be our one request, is to have two on University and one on Ziegler Boulevard.
Any comments from staff with Mr. Byrd's request?
If, if the commission were to consider two, traffic engineering is still going to require or look very closely at the one that's closest to the traffic intersection because it's not so much its distance to the signal itself, but there is a right turn, channelized right turn off of Ziegler, that we just want to make sure it's adequately spaced from there. I know you're looking at it as a service drive on the backside, too. I'm not saying it will, but it could be used to bypass the intersection since it looks so easy to get past it. So those are just, it's just food for thought. Even if you're granted two with the commission, you can still reconsider if you see that concern.
Still got to get past you location-wise.
Yes. All of the curb cuts to this property will be right in, right out by nature of the streets. It's not depicted clearly on the aerial, but Ziegler's turn lanes onto University with its new construction, there will be no left out on this property.
At Ziegler, okay.
At Ziegler or University.
No left out, okay.
Yeah. There's no median openings along the frontage of either street.
Okay.
Thank you, traffic engineering.
Well, all of that said, possibly if we could give the option of the number of them, number curb cuts on University at discretion of traffic engineering, one or two, if it can be worked out.
Is anyone else here to speak for agenda item eight, either the subdivision or the Is there one here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I would just bring to the attention of the commission, you have some comments that have been submitted on these applications in opposition.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Looks to be from Emmanuel Baptist Church. And then another one from a citizen. Is there anyone else present at the meeting today that's in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number nine, 1452 Government Street. We have a subdivision application and a rezone. It's been recommended for holdover to the January 20th meeting, but I understand we have comments from staff, and you're the applicant?
Yes.
Your name and address, please, sir?
Bruce Smith, Coles Murphy Glover, 457 St. Michael Street. We understand that it was recommended for a holdover for January 20th, but since then we've been able to submit some more information back to the staff and hope that we can get approved for approval today, or if not, at least move it up to the January 6th meeting.
Any comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've received the information. We had not, have not yet had an opportunity to review, but we are in agreement with a holdover till the January 6th meeting.
Should be reflected that now the recommended from staff are holdover to January 6th. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item nine, 1452 Government Street, subdivision
Good afternoon. My name's Dawn Lindsay, and I'm the executive director with Cindy Haber Center. Currently, we are located at 1306 Government Street, Mobile, which just happens to be a few blocks from the location that we are looking at building a new office. We have been in Mobile County providing services for individuals with intellectual disabilities since February 2019, and we've been in existence since 1994. Currently, we serve over 500 individuals with intellectual disabilities and also assisting over 100 individuals to obtain services as well. We've been looking at various locations for a couple of years now and just not been able to find something that has been suitable for our needs. We are in a location that is central to the people that we serve, as well as the agencies that we work with. We contract with the Department of Mental Health, and we have found that the location that we're in is very visible, easily accessible to the people and the families that we serve, and hoping that you guys will consider this.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, if I may again draw the attention of the commission to correspondence that says number nine, and it's a letter of support for these applications from the
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? For, thank you, sorry. In favor of?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Jeremy Milling, Milling Commercial Realty, 220 St. Michael Street. And I just briefly want to say, I've been working with the Cindy Haber Center for probably two years, two and a half years, to try to find them an existing building that met their criteria, one of which was a single-story building in the midtown area because of what Ms. Lindsay said about reaching their constituency. Have not been able to do that, and that's why we landed on this location. One thing that I did want to say is that they have probably done the best job I've ever seen of bringing in the neighborhood groups from the front end and trying to do everything possible to mitigate any negative impact on them. And I think by the letter of support from Ms. Brenda Bolton, et cetera, I think it's evidence of that, but they've tried extremely hard to do that. And so I just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention, that they are trying very hard to kind of fit into the fabric of that community. It's not a high-traffic use that they have, and, you know, feel like that it would be a very good use for that site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milling. Is there anyone else here to speak for the agenda item? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Another fourth. Okay, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry. Four? You'd like to come down and speak for the agenda item? Yes, please come on down. Isn't this the number four?
Hi, my name is Brenda Bolton. I live at 310 West Street. I'm here today representing myself and the Line Coff Historic District Government Street Collaborative. I have not been in touch with all members of the Government Street Collaborative, but most of the people in the Old Offenway area that are in the immediately, excuse me, surrounding area, we've met three times, I think, with the Haber Board. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath from rushing, rushing in. I was late.
Catch your breath.
Yeah. But anyway, the Government Street Collaborative and Line Coff, and I think Old Offenway support low-intensity uses like B1 uses on Government Street. This fills the bill in every way. Not only is it a B1 use, but they have given us the best possible voluntary covenant to protect the immediate neighbors now and in the future. And I think all of us who live in the area, and all of you know, that Government Street is a unique frontage. It has evolved over time. Not every case is going to fit all the standards or criteria, but our reading of the zoning ordinance indicates that you have the ability to recognize that and to approve the best possible usage for Government Street frontage. I very much think that this fits in, in that category, and I'm glad to support it. Citizens don't always support business uses. I've been here in opposition to several, but I've also been here in support of several, particularly in the last two, two years. And from my point of view, all the ones that we've supported have ended up being compatible and contributing to our area. I'm very vested in the area. I've lived there a long time, and so I have the best interest of the neighborhood at heart, and I support this development very much. I hope you'll agree and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. So that was the fourth in favor of the agenda item. Is there anyone here to speak against item number nine? Seeing none? We'll move on to agenda item 10, 2621 Ralston Road. We have an application for a PUD, St. John's Deliverance Temple, and a rezone. It's been recommended for approval, findings of fact on both items. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
All good?
All good.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of 2621 Ralston Road? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to 2621 Ralston Road? All right. This concludes the first session of the public hearing. We'll now move to, back to agenda item one for deliberation. Like to remind that number one, as a holdover, is recused for Mr. Carlos Gant. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Oh, I see. Okay, I'm sorry. Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations with findings of fact, A, B, and C.
Properly moved and seconded. Any commentary or questions from commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Extension, item number two, 1901 Hurtel Street. Again, Mr. Carlos Gant is recused. We'll take this in two parts, the subdivision and then the PUD. It's been recommended for a one-year extension.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the PUD, it's been recommended for a one-year extension.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Subdivision application, 153 and 155 North Florida Street, was recommended for tentative approval with eight conditions.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion among commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. New planned unit development applications. Agenda four, 2485 West I-65 Service Road North, PUD for Empire Truck Sales, recommended for approval with findings of fact and 10 conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation with findings of fact, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four passes. Rezoning application, agenda item five, 118 Kilmerock Street. It's been recommended for approval with five conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number six, under rezone applications, 117 North Catherine Street, recommended for approval with eight conditions listed.
Move to approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Sidewalk waiver application, agenda seven, 1812 Old Shell Road, recommended for, for waiver of sidewalk?
Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have a question on this one, just so I'm, I'm clear. The reason that we're not putting a sidewalk in here and waiving it is why?
This, this development is more of a neighborhood-scale development with the building up closer to the street. Here's the aerial here. It's, the building had, previous building's been removed. But you have the dewdrop in right next door, as you can see, right up to the street. Across the street, you have Nixon's and the antique store, and then the former- the street, you have Nixon's and the antique store, and then the former service station and business here. So, the businesses hand, is at, development at hand, as you can see, is built right up to the street. You have parking backing into the street, you have a sidewalk that goes, instead of being behind the parking spaces, which is not appropriate, the sidewalk is in front of the parking spaces, then it goes down to join the right-of-way here at the driveway. The only place that the waiver is applicable to is this area right here. There is a forty-plus-inch oak tree right there, so to have the sidewalk there would require, essentially require the removal of that tree. So, it's only being waived right here at this corner.
Can they not move the easement back a little bit and just offset the sidewalk?
This detail shows it a lot better, there's just, there's not, there's not the room. Yeah, the, the waiver here, I believe that dimension here is less than ten feet.
If I recall, we've discussed this at length in a previous commission meeting prior to your coming onboard, Mr. Jones.
And they actually came back, because initially, I believe the waiver, the previous waiver also was asking for the waiver through the driveway section, and in the median grassed area between the driveway and the parking stalls. They have literally installed it, it is only from the western driveway to the parking lot, uh, excuse me, to the property line.
Only reason I'm asking, this, this is a high-traffic area for young families that, that always walk down this road, so if it's safe, you know, for somebody pushing a baby stroller and stuff, and they're not going to tump one over because of rough conditions, I'm okay. Thank you.
Any further comments from commissioners? So we have a properly moved and seconded for the waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Group applications, Agenda Eight, southwest corner of Ziegler Boulevard and North University Boulevard, a subdivision and a rezone.
Request to hold this over until twenty January to allow the developer to meet with the community on this rezoning issue, specifically with regards to the church and to Alpine Hills subdivision.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded for a holdover until the January twentieth meeting. Any further comments or questions from commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to hold over until January twentieth. Number nine, one four five two Government Street. We have the subdivision and the rezone. In public hearing, was determined that a January sixth holdover might be appropriate.
Recommend for holdover to January sixth.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for the holdover until the next commission meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to hold over until January sixth passes. Number ten, twenty-six twenty-one Ralston Road. We'll take these in separate, we have a PUD, recommended for approval with findings of fact.
I move to approve, subject to staff recommendation, with findings of fact A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion among commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the PUD passes, the rezone. It's been recommended for approval.
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the rezone passes. This concludes the deliberation and voting segment of the December sixteenth Planning Commission meeting. The staff or Ms. Pappas have any other business? Seeing no further business, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We will reconvene January sixth.